Welcome everyone to our May 8th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a proclamation for the municipal clerk because it's municipal clerk week. Yep, and since we don't have anything else on our agenda though, we are going to start with an ABC hearing. Okay?
Very nice.
Has nothing to do with the fact that we are recognizing the Wilshire Grant as the Business of the Year tomorrow night at the Community Awards Center?
Couldn't be better timing. Robert C. Williams appearing on behalf of Wilshire Caterers. I have Mr. Travis Weiss to my right, who's the principal of the Wilshire Caterers. Very simple application. We appeared before the zoning board, and on February 15th they approved the lower level expansion. It's an interior expansion. It was storage space that we were not using. We're building two rooms. They're multi-purpose rooms. They'll be used for wedding after-parties, small events, gives them additional space to accommodate public demand. The big thing is, a lot of people have weddings today. They want to have an after-party on premises. This gives them a separate area to go to, keeps them within the building, and of course, after they party there, they can stay in the rooms. So we keep them off the road. Everybody has a good time.
Keeps them off the road also. Keeps them off the road too.
So zoning board was unanimously approved it. We're here tonight because we technically have to expand the licensing privileges into those two rooms. That's all we're here for.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Any questions about this transfer?
Just a statement.
Yes.
You know, great idea. You know, that is a new trend with after-parties after, you know, after the weddings. So great for coming into the times and trying to, with these new weddings. So, no, good luck.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, I want to know more about this trend. I had an after-party the next day, because I had a lot of out-of-town guests, but you're talking about after the wedding's over? There's a later that night?
Yeah, if the wedding's over at 11:00. You can go downstairs.
You get to spend more money.
I could have done that even 25, 26 years ago. Okay, thank you.
You get to spend more money.
The older people go home, the wedding party goes downstairs.
Right, the real party goes downstairs.
The real party goes downstairs.
And the mother of the bride.
I have a question.
Councilman Cirillo?
But so if an establishment already has a liquor license, it's only limited to that area?
To the area that you have license, yes.
Okay, so it's like a square footage or whatever?
Well, if you look, we don't have the full application here in front of you, but if you look at the back, there's a diagram of the existing premises, and then we show these two rooms were storage rooms. We didn't want them licensed at the time. Now we want a license, so we have to show you that we're adding these two rooms. But that's it. You can only serve where it's licensed.
So it's the same license, Mr. Williams, that's being expanded?
The license for Wilshire Caterers is being expanded. The hotel has a separate license, and Primavera has their own license. So everybody has their own little area where they can serve.
Okay, so just, again, a dumb question, just to become more educated. So if you have three licenses in an establishment, can they be consolidated into one license? Or that's outside of the parameters of the state?
Well, you could license the entire building if you had one owner. But Primavera is a separate entity.
Got it.
And the hotel's a separate entity, so that's why it's done that way.
All right. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Just one last clarification, and to my memory is, even though it's an after-party, it's still the cutoff is whatever the time is.
Oh, we have to go by municipal hours, yes. No. But the weddings sometimes get over at 11:00 or 12:00. And the fear is that people get in their car and go someplace else, and this keeps them on the premises.
That's true. Casey, are any comments or questions about this?
The application was submitted to the Police Department. They have no, there's no impediment, so there's no reason not to grant the application. And every licensee, part of the licensing process is you have to submit a diagram of licensed premises, and you can't move it one inch without going back for approval, so...
Which you already did, and that was voted unanimously.
Correct.
So make a motion to approve? That was great. Okay?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for telling me that. So thank you for allowing that little change in order. And as I mentioned, this is Municipal Clerks Week. This is a proclamation. This was established Municipal Clerks Association of New Jersey. I guess we'd want to recognize clerks throughout the state, because, you know, we think of them as the clerk, but they coordinate so much for our township, seems to be the first stop. People have questions. They're also election officials, and it's the staff for the council. They really do everything at our beck and call. We don't have a separate staff as other municipalities might have, or other larger cities. We rely solely on the clerk to answer all of our questions or to get any documents that we might need. So we are going to proclaim, oh, here it says, "The office of the municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government exist throughout the world, and the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government and other levels. Municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. The municipal clerk serves the information center on functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, annual meetings of their state, province, county, international professional organizations." It would be most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of our own office of municipal clerk. So now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Parisi and the Town Council, we do recognize the week of May 6th through May 12th as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Karen Carnaval and all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent, along with the other ladies in your office. So we are blessed to have you.
Sweet kiss again.
Can we have the entire council?
Yeah, of course.
Absolutely. Come on, get in the picture. Let's go.
That would be lovely.
She's special.
We'll never help ours next time out.
That's great.
You're welcome.
No, there's no reasonable.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Speech!
Yeah, you just came back from AC, so tell us about those workshops you just went to.
Yes, I did. I just came back from Atlantic City and earned all my education credits.
He just had to do that.
Your five minutes is up. Yeah. I just want to say thank you to the council and to Mayor Parisi for this. The Municipal Clerks Association of New Jersey wanted to bring attention to municipal clerks, because very often people don't understand what the office is about. And, you know, we are kind of the hub of the township. People do reach out to us first for information. They don't really quite know where to go, and we direct them as best we can. And, you know, we take care of licensing and elections and a whole slew of different things, and we work with the public, and it really is a privilege, and I get to do it in my hometown, which is even better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all you do for us, because you keep us in line.
And one more person, Jack Sayers, who I'm constantly running down the hall.
Need an intercom system.
I do. A direct line.
One-on-one person.
Since Megan's here, we're going to hear all about the street fair and upcoming events.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to keep Karen, your set for the book, but I want to pass this down. So our annual street fair is coming up, June 2nd.
Nice clips.
There you go. And the lightbulb paper clip you all can keep. So yeah, we have, the biggest event I think that we hold all year long is June 2nd this year. The museum is open. New this year, we added motorcycle show. There's a flyer in there about motorcycles. We will be judging, and you will win a basket for the best motorcycle, in addition to our car show, where there will be three trophies awarded. And proceeds of both of those events will go to the Friends of Edison, who will be helping us with registration and set up that day. Also, new this year is an event that we're holding called West Orange Idol. That will not be on street fair day. It'll be in the middle of the summer, July 21st, and it's going to be just like American Idol was, I guess minus the celebrities. I don't know. They, we're asking for any age, any talent will come and sign up on the flyers that will be distributed throughout town and through the Board of Education. There's a QR code that you can scan, that you can download the form to sign up. We're hoping to get, you know, 500 contestants and be able to whittle that down to, you know, something manageable. It's from 2:00 in the afternoon till 7:00. So we're hoping to be able to do good seven-minute stences all day long, and then there will be an idol trophy. So we're looking for some judges. I think that Michelle's daughter's getting married that day, and the mayor is marrying her, sort of. And so we're looking for definitely, I know Jerry Guarino, you're already in. So we're definitely looking for some fun, interesting judges, people that want to come out and help us that day. I can tell you that the street fair is basically the same as it has been. The footprint is the same. We're working with the businesses along Main Street and the residents that are going to be interrupted for the day, and everyone has been really gracious. They know that this is an opportunity to have 5,000-plus people come to our downtown, and everyone's been really good. We try real hard to accommodate anyone that needs to leave the footprint. So if you have a question or a comment or a concern, email me at downtownwo.com. And if you need a parking pass, you can get that from me. And we also are going to have designated handicap parking. Last year, it was a little difficult to find out where handicap parking was. So that will be clearly marked on Lakeside Avenue, and we are bringing back the golf carts. We're going to have two to three, six to eight passenger golf carts that will be able to move people from these two parking lots here at Town Hall and Washington Street you'll have to walk in from. So that's pretty much it. It's a busy summer planned. We have half our booths already sold. People are starting now to come in and ask questions. So if you want to volunteer, there's also a volunteer spot on our website that you can sign up and spend, you know, a couple of hours with us doing anything from kids' rides to the beer garden to volunteer check-in. You get a fancy t-shirt that says West Orange Street Fair on it, and are very much appreciative to anyone that wants to come and play with us that day.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Great job as usual, Meg. Couple questions, and just to coordinate. So last year, I had worked the rides for you. What, are we having rides again this year for the kids, or what are you?
Yeah, they, I was told that bounce houses are not rides. So we're going to have bounce houses, several different kinds of activities for them, plus a little mini-golf area, nine holes of mini-golf that will be free or close to free for the mini-golf, and we're hoping to charge $10 or $12 an armband for all day. We actually are moving the rides. They used to be behind the beer garden, and we're moving them to the CVS parking lot to allow for a little bit easier setup. There's lots of support that goes into the blowups, and it's somewhat dangerous having lines and all kinds of stuff on Alden. So we're moving that to the front part, a little bit more high-profile, and easier for parents to still be in the street fair and see their kids on the rides.
And then the West Orange, the Friends of the Library, they're having a book sale that day. If you could just, when you get a chance, talk to Dave Cubey, maybe coordinate.
Dave was in our meeting today. Are you doing a book sale over here or in the footprint? He wasn't clear.
I thought, and maybe my colleague on the Councilman Kukoviac remembers, I thought it was actually at the library, and they were going to have a presence at the street fair as well.
I would think so. Dragging, you know, 500 books to the middle of downtown's probably not ideal. But yeah, he did say that he wanted the foundation, the library, and then the friends all to have a booth, and that something was going on, sales, whether it was plants or books or...
Oh yeah, the plant sale. The plant sale and the books.
Right. People are parking over here and then walking in or shuttling in, so it is an opportunity.
I said, there's going to be a shuttle, then maybe let's get some signs at the library so they could get over. And then my last comment, which actually, they started it last year on that day, the West Orange Pal did their home run derby, and it worked out so well with all the parents, everybody coming down to the street fair. So that will be going on as well, so may want to send them an email to...
Right, that's Cheryl Merklin. Right, yes, I've already been talking to her. We coordinated the time so that there wasn't, there's already a lot happening. There's the bike rodeo in the morning, so we wanted to make sure that people had enough to do, but we didn't overuse our resources that we have downtown.
Okay, and is the town fishing derby still that day?
We actually moved that to June 9th.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because the rodeo, and Jerry can speak more to this, but the rodeo pulls the same kids that would be at the fishing derby. So we wanted all parents and all kids to be able to participate if they're available.
No, this is great. You definitely can't be bored on June 2nd here in West Orange, so thank you.
And if you volunteer, I'll find you a parking spot.
Thanks. Councilwoman Guarino?
Thank you. Megan, great job, and looking forward to another successful street fair. Question. Olivia and Willow opens on the 19th, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll also be telling the residents that there are new businesses downtown to go and buy treats at, or is Olivia and Willow going to have a booth at the street fair, or they can just use their storefront?
Right. There's about 15 businesses that are affected from the corner of Washington Street into Babcock, and a couple of them have chose to have a booth inside the footprint. The people that are going to be walking right past their stores, Willow and Olivia wants everyone to see how beautiful their store is. So you'll be walking right past 255 Main, and you'll be able to see, she will have goods and wares to purchase.
And the ribbon cutting's on the 19th, right?
It absolutely is on the 19th, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And she has a soft bagel opening on Saturday, the 12th.
I'll talk about the bike rodeo later. Thank you.
So Meg, the cars are vintage, but are historic. Are the motorcycles as well, they are?
Yeah, so choppers, sports bikes, and Harleys, I guess, are the three. So we were hoping, I guess Anthony is, Anthony from the poorhouse is spearheading the car show this year with John McElroy, and he has a love of motorcycles that we didn't know about. So yeah, it'll, we're going to line that whole area in front of the brand-new Battery Building with cars and motorcycles, which should be really a fun day.
Very nice. Good. Any questions? Thanks.
Would you give this set to Karen? Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, any update on redevelopment? Except it looks great?
Not really. I mean, everything's moving along very well. I was by there today again. I spoke with Mr. Terrell, and they are moving on the Battery Building now, and he keeps telling me they're hoping to have it done at least, there's two phases in the Battery Building, so they're helping to have that done by June and the rest of it finished by August, but I'm not so sure if that's the case, but they are moving along very well. I mean, it's really looking good.
Any questions, Meg?
Any update on number of tenants?
You know, I didn't look at that, but last week when I was there, there were four people who were actually living in there, and there were other, they had, you know, a whole bunch of people who were signing up to be tenants that they do, I guess they, whatever they do to get them in there. But there were, actually, there were four people actually living in there.
Yeah.
As of last week.
So four households moving?
Yeah, four people. It's apartments, so yeah, four different people.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I actually went by there a week and a half ago with Frank Nicoletti in my neighborhood. He was going down there, and I just happened to be available. And they're gorgeous, I have to say. They're, I was, I knew they would be nice, but they're really beautiful, the quality of the cabinetry, the countertops, washer and dryer in there, the flooring, just very nice open space and very roomy. So I was impressed. The layout of the building is nice, and just easy access to the amenities, like to walk over to the other building, and we're, you know, in the, when that gets done. But Catherine couldn't be nicer. She says she, the phones ringing off the hook.
Yep.
And people are coming in there constantly, and they're going. So it was exciting to hear. I'd like to have a little conversation, I guess when we need to, about the jitney stopping there, because I, you know, she is getting questions about that, and I know it does come down Main Street, jitney six, so I don't know when the timing will be right for that, but, you know, that's a good thing to have, to have to need another stop, so.
Absolutely.
If you get a chance, I'd definitely pop in there. It's really nice.
Any comments?
Just had another question about Phase Two. Is there any update on where things stand with Prism signing the documents?
My understanding is that the documents have been signed, and they're being sent My understanding is that the documents have been signed and they're being sent to our attorneys. But as of today, they did not have them yet.
It just seems unusual that we would be waiting, now it's coming up on close, not close to a year, but we're on top of, I don't know, about eight or nine months since they were approved by the council. Is there some reason why this is holding up?
I have no idea. Well, I had one idea last, last time I spoke to them. Greenfield, is it, is their partner out in California, out in Connecticut? The documents were sent to Greenfield to review also, and supposedly that's where they got held up. Then they came back to, I guess Prism, then signed off on, my understanding is they signed off on all the documents and now have sent them to our attorneys for review. So our attorneys, I tried to get a hold of Jen today, but she wasn't in the office. So I'm not so sure whether they have them in their hands yet, or they were sent over to them and they're going to review the documents. I would venture to say by next meeting, everything is beside law.
Well, so it's been eight months. You're not concerned?
No, I, again, it's, this is, I've been involved in these things for a very long time. These guys are businessmen, they're, they work the way they work and I, I'm not concerned about it. I mean, if they sign off on the documents, they're in agreement with the documents.
Have they signed off on them?
That's what our attorneys are telling me, that, yes. They signed off on them and they're sending them over to our attorneys to review.
Okay.
So I was told that they were signed off.
Okay. Is there any practical effect from this delay? I would think they can't get started, I know, I know that Phase Two has, I think, more strict timelines for construction than Phase One had.
It does. The biggest practical effect is moving DPW. That's going to be the biggest effect. Because now that they've signed off on those documents, once we get them back, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with DPW at this point.
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking at and working on right now.
But if I remember correctly, the Lakeside property where the DPW is, is actually in their second sort of phase of, Phase Two? Second phase of Phase Two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But the bottom line is, we're going to have to get out of there.
Right.
So we're looking, we're back out on the road looking for places to put DPW.
Right. Do you know, is it, is it a matter of financing? Do they, I know they had trouble getting financing for Phase One and had to sort of give up the project, but is that an issue here as far as you know?
What do you mean?
Well, it would seem to me that they'd want to move ahead with it, and I'm just trying to...
Well, they can't move ahead with Phase Two until they're, they're at least mostly done with Phase One, because it's, it's all, it all connects.
Right.
So I was talking to Mr. Terrell today and he's, he claims to me that they're probably, he thinks they're going to be done by August with Phase One. Which makes sense, that they sign off on the documents, if they're done by, by August in Phase One, they can start moving ahead on Phase Two as quickly as possible.
Because, and my recollection is there's at least one spot in the documents where we have already surpassed what the deadline was, and I can't remember the details. Does that mean that they're all going to come back to the council for review and vote on any sort of amendments?
I don't think so. I mean, we, as I told you last week, we made those amendments. Actually, I wanted to bring this to show you. These are the amendments.
This is for Phase One? This is the DGP?
Yes, this is the document for, from just 216.
Wow.
And I don't think so. I don't believe that's going to be a problem. At least from what I see today. Now, I don't know when, a month from now, but I can tell you today, it doesn't seem that way.
Okay. I'll go back and review the document and just point out a few places.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what I was going to say to that discussion is that the legal instruments need to be executed before the financing is secured. So this is, this is only the first step. I mean, they have to sign off on those documents, like ASAP, so they can go to the banking institutions and have the, you know, and have them consider the financing. In addition to that, the disposition of the DPW is necessary. That may also play into financing as well. So all those parts need to move at the same time. So I'm sure, hopefully, discussions are being held right now with the financial institutions without any commitments until the legal instruments are signed and then they can proceed for that letter with notice of intent. But a decision needs to be made on DPW, because that needs to be part of the process so that they can sign on the final financial documents.
Absolutely.
All right, let's move into council liaison announcements.
Thank you, Council President. I want to get your attention first this time. Thank you, Council President, and my colleagues. Just an update to what Ms. Brill said about street fair. We're looking forward to everybody coming out to the street fair on June 2nd. And also, on June 2nd, we have a nice added addition will be the first West Orange Bike Rodeo for our schoolchildren. It will be held at Washington School from 9:30 to 11:30. The applications and the waiver forms are all going to the schools, so we need to get every parent who wants to come, and you can even, we'll even accept waivers signed the day of the rodeo, but we need a minimum of 12, 20 people to sign up before we can really move ahead with it. We're being cosponsored, of course, by the West Orange Police Department and Easy Ride New Jersey, which is bringing a lot of goodies, some new helmets. Other organizations are donating helmets, but a child must come with, of course, their own bicycle or tricycle and their own bike helmet. And there'll be new things, there'll be educational materials handed out, so we're really looking forward to a good turnout. It's part of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board's onus to induce education in safety, particularly bike safety and pedestrian safety on our roadways, and we're best to start with our children. So we're looking for it. My thanks to my board members, especially Lori Caffener and Officer Chris Jacek and Officer Scott Marsh of the West Orange Police Department Traffic Bureau, who without their help, we really couldn't move this forward. So we're looking forward to seeing you there. And there will be bike racks put up on Main Street too, so when the kids leave the bike rodeo, they can go to the street fair and keep their bikes out of the street fair. I know, Meg, and you were concerned, so we made sure, we took care of that. So we're looking forward to that. Secondly of all, I was great to hear from Mr. Lepore today about moving forward on the request of the New Jersey Department of Transportation for designating certain portions of Route 10 as school zones, particularly by Kelly, I mean Liberty Middle School and Mount Pleasant School. So the request and the application has been sent to Assemblyman John McKeem to help us move it forward to designate parts of Route 10, which is known as Mount Pleasant or Route 10 State Highway, as school zones, which is something that we need to do, and we're looking forward to that. Also, the road diet, and we're all really biting at the bit to get, Mr. Lepore has promised us in the next couple of weeks, we'll have the final drawings, which will be submitted to the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, and then we'll be able to show them to the general public. They also will be at the board, the next West Orange Pedestrian Safety Board meeting, which is May 16th. We moved it because of the Chamber of Commerce Dinner honoring many great people in the township of West Orange. It will be on May 16th from 7:30 to 9:00 at the Educational Center at Turtle Bag Zoo. We look forward to the public coming out and hearing what we have to say and giving us some of their opinions. Also, another thing that we're working with Easy Ride New Jersey Transportation is a Safe Reaches to School Audit and Survey, how to really develop our school zones and make them safer for our students to walk and even ride their bikes to school. It's a two-phase thing. It's getting kids to, you know, get to school, but it's also getting them to exercise more. So it's a twofold thing. It's transportation, but also recreation and physical fitness and wellness. So we're looking forward to that. And we'll have more information about our survey and the application, of course, to my council colleagues. I will need your support in getting an ordinance resolution passed, so Easy Ride and New Jersey Department of Transportation will sponsor it. So we're looking forward to that, and I thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I could piggyback off that.
Sure.
Council President, we confirmed that there's an issue with the traffic light at Woodland Avenue in Pleasant Valley Way.
It's...
Woodland Avenue or Pleasant Valley Way?
Right.
Yeah, I spoke to the Board of Freeholders about it and it's being addressed. I know that there were concerns in the neighborhood. And also a crosswalk, the potential for a crosswalk. So looking into that as well. Again, that's the topic of public pedestrian safety.
Right, and if I may piggyback to him, Council President, for a second? Thank you, Council President, for following up on that. But the good news about the light at Woodland Avenue, they fixed the timing with the button. So very, thank you very much, the county went out there and re-timed it and fixed it. So now, as Lori Caffener noticed, when she went to push the button, it changed when it needed to change, and they are working on the crosswalk. So thank you very much about your support on our pedestrian safety.
Yeah, you bring it up, the light, and if I can, I guess if I can have a floor still.
Of course.
Yeah, you know, I attended the tunnel book in on Northfield Avenue. The developers, the potential developers of that, or the new owners of that property, had the foresight to bring the community together. They were very informative, very transparent. A lot of neighbors came out. This was last week. I know Ms. Kapovia was there. She, and Lori was there. I know he posted some footage. But it was nice to see. I just want to mention that it was nice to see individuals investing in town, also taking into account the community, especially after we went through the quick check issue. It's nice, it's nice to see folks asking for input. Bottom line is, is that there are some luxury, sorry about that, some luxury apartment units where the hotel is right now, I believe it's 40. And then commercial, where spectators used to be, separate structure from the housing component. So I don't know if, they didn't make those drawings public, so we'll see if we can make that happen for the St. Cloud neighborhood. There was discussion about a restaurant over and over. There were pros and cons. With a restaurant idea, as was discussed at the meeting, it needs to be really, I guess, supported by the local neighborhood. If there's no local support or local clientele, some of you are business owners, a business is not going to survive just outside volume or outside traffic or hoping that, you know, there is a level of clientele coming in. Even with the Eagle Rock traffic, I'm sorry, the traffic from the zoo, there's no assurances that after spending four hours at the zoo, folks are going to stay around and have a meal. There were some examples about folks who take their kids to the aquarium, and the last thing they said they want to do is after four hours, still stick around, grab a meal and then go home. So those are the type of discussions that were held, and again, it's to the great credit of the new owners. That was refreshing to see. Just wanted to make mention. Thank you.
Good. And again, there is no plan, nothing's presented to the planning board or zoning, they still have their considerations. Councilwoman?
Sure. Well, while you were there, I was at the planning board meeting that evening. Chairman Bagoff was kind enough to have me come and present the senior citizen survey to them. They were very tentative, great questions were asked. I wanted to deliver it because the master plan is going to be developed within, I guess, the next year, and stakeholders will be coming to the table meeting with the various planning board members. So felt it was important to deliver that document to the planning board and planning for our future here in the township. And like I said, they're very gracious, they ask great questions, and even though, you know, we had good conversation and, you know, answers for that evening, at least it's a document they could utilize when planning the next 10 years of the township. So I appreciate them taking notice of that. I just want to congratulate not only West Orange High School, but our Recreation Department on a joint partnership that's been a couple of years in the works. West Orange High School will be next year, they just approved it last night at their meeting, and they will be having a girls' lacrosse program starting next year, next season. A few years back, Mr. Keough, Edwin Johnson, and one of the teachers at the high school, Kaylee Beal, been working really, really hard with the parents of the West Orange Lacrosse Federation, the Wolf, the WOLFs, in developing, getting more girls interested in playing lacrosse. And they're ready. So next year, they're going to be opening up this program, and, you know, just proves again the joint partnerships that we have with the department, with the West Orange School Board. And I know there's many excited parents, I've talked to a few, and some young ladies were looking for great things to be done there up at the high school. Also, I want to let you know, the West Orange Recreation Department, if you look on their website, if you want to join the Township Pool, they're having early bird discounts right now, so please go online and get your pool memberships for the summer. Now that it's finally, starting to feel like summer, getting some warm weather in, which is great. I'm sure not too many people were looking to buy pool passes the past month or so with the snow still on the ground. So it will be, as the weather gets a little warmer, you don't want to miss out on opportunities, so please make sure you get your pool passes. Let's see here, we also have the West Orange, our senior advisors, we have the senior luncheon at Mayfair Farms from 11:30 to 3:00 PM, $25 a person. And again, that's May 30th. So all interested, you could either go online or call the Health Department, the Senior Services Department, rather, at 325-4105. And I'm going to announce at every meeting, if you want to sign up for the senior activities list, whether you get it in the mail or versus getting e-blast, please give them a call, again, at 325-4105. And that is it, Council President.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you this evening.
Just got three quick things. Open space. We're going to have a vendor that's going to be planting 100 trees at The Rock, which is the open space property at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue in the First Mountain. Going to be putting in 100 trees. They're going to be two-and-a-half inch caliber trees, which are pretty substantial, usually around eight to 10 feet high. The reason I'm bringing this up partly is because we need to get the water system up there working correctly, so that we can water these trees and also the other trees around the property. And there seems to be some issues with the, with the water company. I'm just wanting to throw that out in case Mr. Lepore or Chief Abbott could, could help push that ahead, but, because it's going to start getting warmer and drier and we need to take care of them. Also, the open space committee is starting work on updating its open space master plan. Last update was from 2010, so would welcome ideas and input from folks. I wonder if we could put the 2010 open space plan up on the town website so that people could get to it, maybe linked from the homepage, so people could take a look at it? Great. Our next open space meeting is Wednesday, June 6th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. Second, I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to everybody who made the Paint and Sip fundraiser for Parents Advocating for Special Services and Education over at the CAT Center last Friday. Gina Velasquez, Alex Durand, and Cindy Matute-Brown, I think, did a lot of work. There were some other people that did that too. But I'm mentioning them because all of them were quite kind in their comments to me about my painting, although the comments were sort of bordering on alternate universe. And then last, I'm sure Council President is going to talk about this, but it was a wonderful dedication Saturday of the James J. Sheeran Park, former mayor, war hero, just all-around wonderful guy for everyone you talk with. And a lot of people were honored, and it was a great event. I just wanted to flag that a couple of Mayor Sheeran's daughters were there, both of them from out of state. And it was, it was funny because my, my wife's father, my late father-in-law, Joe Silvestri, was Mayor Sheeran's campaign manager way back when. So it was very interesting, just to sort of reminisce. My wife could barely recall what the girls looked like when they were kids too, but it was, it was a really great event, and it was really great to hang with them and reminisce. That's all, Council President.
So the, it was really all about community on Saturday when Joe talked about Collmore Circle. This was, the mayor had, at the chamber state of the town address, in his address, he had talked about a participatory budget, introducing a participatory budget concept. Kind of didn't really know what that meant until he received a letter from a nine-year-old little girl, Emily Rinzler, my neighbor on Collmore, who asked for a lending library on Collmore Circle. So that was granted, but the mayor had the foresight to, this became one of those community budget items, to purchase two park benches, to go with the lending library. And since I lived there, he called and asked, let's dedicate the benches. I wanted a, I did present a lifetime achievement award to Max Manchell. Max turned 90 on April 12th, and he is still actively involved in the Environmental Commission. He was deputy, he's deputy mayor, former planning board attorney, West Orange County Committee District Leader, just so many things, and he is an inspiration to many. The other bench was for my next-door neighbor, Avery Thompson, West Orange High School student that passed away about three years ago. Then we found out there was another, Mackenzie Fitchin, another young student at 16 that also passed away. Her brother and mom and dad were there, and they donated 16 books to symbolize 16 years of Mackenzie's life to the lending library. And my neighbors are already posting that it's a constant flow of people in and out of the library. There's another dedication to Jonathan Silikoff, who had childhood roots on Undercliffe Terrace right around the block, and he passed away of ALS, a young dad at Gregory Avenue School. So it was very solemn to some extent, and, and just a beautiful day for the community to come out. So if anyone does have any ideas, now we see how it works. This all came together beautifully. I thank the Department of Public Works for really pulling it all together. And Joe Fagan, as Joe mentioned, Joe Fagan had a history of James J. Sheeran, who lived there as well, on Collmore Terrace. So very nice, very nice day.
Did you mention the library?
The lending library, the little girl Emily and her dad built it and painted it, and yeah, everyone is welcome to come and either share a book, leave a book, take a book. Avery's Thompson's parents donated eight videos of Avery's concerts, and I think there's only three left, so people are looking at those as well. Beautiful day. Speaking of the chamber, tomorrow night, the chamber, the 20th Annual Community Awards Dinner is tomorrow night at the Wilshire Grand. I just wanted to mention the honorees this year. Business of the Year is the Wilshire Grand, who have been so generous to the community. The Educator of the Year is Gerard Gary-Frank at St. Cloud, teacher at St. Cloud. Our Police Officers of the Year, Officer Jeffrey James and Detective Sebastian DeLeón. Firefighters of the Year, Captain George Hess, firefighters Frank McGovern, Craig Vanderhoff, Acting Captain Matthew Keenan, and firefighter Nick Manzella. So our guest speaker is Phil Alagia, Chief of Staff to the Essex County Executive, Joe DiVincenzo. Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Wilshire Grand. And the following day, Thursday, we have the Glenmont Garage Friends of Thomas Edison Spring Tune-Up. This is just a lovely cocktail reception in Llewellyn Park on the grounds of Glenmont Home. Our signature cocktail is the Electric Spark. It's provided by The Poorhouse Pints and Pies, and the food is provided by Benji's and the Wilshire Grand. Beautiful evening, under the tent, the Glenmont Garage. Proceeds of the event go toward conserving the original 1904 electric charging station in the Glenmont Garage. And I also just wanted to mention that we have two grants under consideration. One is the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Technical Planning Assistance Grant, and the other is a creative placemaking grant along the Valley Corridor. So if anyone's interested, shout, and help us plan. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino, President, Councilman Cirillo.
President.
Councilman Garino.
President.
Councilman Kapovia.
President.
Council President McCartney.
President.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, unafraid, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Sunday is Mother's Day, if you can, call your mother. Just a, just a reminder. Um, so, we'll open our meeting with public comment, if anyone has a comment, please
Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road, on behalf of our Green West Orange. Good to see all of you.
Welcome.
I have, I have a few issues, uh, I have a few questions. Uh, Jack, since you did the, uh, update on the Main Street, it sounds really nice, I was wondering if they still plan to have street trees there?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I would think so, but I'll check.
Okay. The, you mentioned that you're looking for another site for the Department of Public Works, have you decided not to move it up to the Essex Green Shopping Center?
Not at this point.
Check. I thought we can do that.
I'm sorry.
You want her to speak?
Oh, right, okay, sorry. I'm sorry, I was, I was listening, sorry. Sally, please, present your comments, good.
It's not been a few hours.
Good for you.
On the agenda this evening is a resolution for planting 200 trees, I'm wondering if you could tell us what species and the size. And finally, uh, on tonight's agenda is a resolution to hire CME associates to do a traffic study for West Essex Highlands. We understand that the town council and administration are in negotiations with the affordable housing nonprofit, Fair Share Housing, and a developer who owns the 124 acres in dispute, Garden Homes. What is the ultimate goal of the traffic study? The public wants to know if you are negotiating to build the case to preserve the land, or to help the developer construct their proposed 700 apartments despite decades of opposition by the neighborhood in this inappropriate landlocked site. The nonprofit, our Green West Orange, notes that there is activity towards enabling garden homes to build on this property despite the fact that we are at the breaking point in terms of a tax burden, school admissions, and the need to preserve trees. In order to build that project, at least 10,000 trees will have to come down. Already at the planning board, there has been movement toward minimizing the strict standard of the steep slope ordinance, which would enable the developer. I also want to note that the downtown Main Street project has been allowed to escape their affordable housing obligation of 70 units. Our Green West Orange wants to know what you are negotiating, as we believe the, the public has a right to know. Which of you is going to be the champion for smart planning, which means preserving the quality of life for the current residents in that neighborhood, building in accordance with the site and its limitations, and preserving trees and protecting the taxpayers of West Orange? What would be the point of meeting an affordable housing obligation, which is meant to do good and do bad to everybody and everything else? So I look forward to your comments, and thank you for hearing mine.
Thank you.
Council President, while the issue is hot, uh, I just want to advise the council we shouldn't be commenting on that. As everyone here knows, we're not in negotiations, we're in litigation, um, and that's why that resolution is on, and we really can't discuss it at this point, the litigation is ongoing, it's going to take some time for it to resolve, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I just the message. Thank you. And, uh, this is, this is Amanda's back there. That's not Amanda.
So, uh, good evening, um, I'm Robert Daniel from Two Bucking, Two B Buckingham Road, and I'd like to thank Mr. Sayers for introducing the Department of Public Works into the, tonight's agenda, or tonight's discussion and Essex Green, so therefore, this isn't coming out of the blue. So first, a question. What are you hiding, and why are, is it being hidden, and what is being hidden? And I'm referring to my Oprah request regarding the work of Perret Sumgin, and that's the architect who was working on the Department of Public Works relocation, which was just talked about, thanks to, um, Mr. Cirillo, Mr. Sayers. Uh, the public works relocation, I re, I submitted an Oprah request in, uh, Town Clerk Karen here is familiar with it, when I received it, was completely redacted, clouded and obscured, and that will all be posted on our Green West Orange website, the response. But a contract had been issued in 2015 to study a specific alternative site at the corner of Prospect and Mount Pleasant Avenue, which fortunately today is being redeveloped as the God Earth School, and, uh, God willing, soon we'll see a, uh, new early childhood center rising at that site. So, my question is, why is so much of our township's money being spent on covering up stuff and, and keeping secrets, when this is an important ingredient, from what I understand, the phase two of the downtown redevelopment? So why is this being hidden, and what are you hiding? So we understand that the Township Council's resolution was subverted and used to study another site within exec, within Executive Drive, which we've seen through another Oprah request. And from what I understand, and Mr. Kizer is here, who is familiar with state procurement regulations, that, uh, New Jersey Administrative Code 5:30-11.6 restricts when the town council says we're studying a particular site, that is the site that is being studied, you can't move it to another site. That's what the state procurement regulations say regarding such procurements. So maybe that's what's being hidden, we don't know. Maybe we're going to have to appeal that, our Oprah request to the Superior Court or to the government's Record Council. So, second, another observation, and this goes to what I handed out here, Pearl Grigel's firm, who is our township planner, he received, and, um, you folks can take a look at this who've gotten, he received a purchase order on November 29th, 2017, in the amount of $8,600 pursuant to Resolution 213-17. And that was, it, by the way, retroactively issued to cover the Essex Green Area Need Study, which you're all familiar with. And, um, that actually exceeded the approved value by nearly 15%. So the Township Council resolution, and you have there the proposal, was for a particular amount of money, but the purchase order was exceeded it by 15%. I brought this up in January 23rd at our council meeting, I don't know if there was a response from administration, it was going to be looked into, uh, maybe it's on some videotape, I don't like this whole notion that I have to go listen to a whole videotape months later and go figure out if I actually, if an answer was given by administration. So this is the paradox of visibility, of accessibility, that you can actually see everything that's happening here in the meeting, you can listen to it on video if you actually have the patience to see it, but nothing is indexed. So, um, the planners, the township planner was paid 14.8% more, and it's all in the paperwork that you have in front of us. In addition, I direct your attention to the most recent, recent township audit of 2016, which was published on May 26th, 2017, little, almost a year ago. And it was discussed and reviewed and approved by the Township Council on June 27th of last year. And I draw your attention, and you folks have it there, to the bottom of the page, on page 146, to the bottom half of the page, conveniently, it's the first page that I'm giving it to you. And it addresses both of these situations, where you're not supposed to be issuing purchase orders, here, I'll turn to it. Recommendation is, recommended that the township properly encumber funds prior to procuring goods and/or services, and the explanation is, a number of departments have violated the township's purchasing manual procedures, making purchases prior to obtaining a purchase order, and that's apparently what happened with the Essex Green Area Need of Redevelopment. At a corrective action plan, the township will institute additional internal controls to monitor such activity and provide training to employees to prevent such violations. And the question is, so what happened in September with the area need study? So, um, I find this disturbing, I'm bringing this to your attention as our council members, you are fiduciaries of the money that's had, that, um, is being spent here.
Your time is up.
That is being spent here, and I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Anyone else? You can pull the microphone down. Mm-hmm. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, Patricia Segalas, I live at 430 Main Street, that's the Deckman House here in West Orange. Um, my situation is for mostly the seniors, transportation, it's deplorable, absolutely deplorable. And not only that, but the communication between, um, activities and recreation and the busing itself. Uh, just recently, there was the, the prom. I live in the Deckman House, I asked my director there, "Oh, there was supposed to be transportation, oh, um, what time will transportation be here on Friday or Wednesday?" She goes, "Oh, you know what, I haven't even heard anything about the transportation. I've put in emails and I have not heard anything back." Okay, so I waited and, um, the next day, I didn't hear anything, so I asked around the office, I mean, around the building, nobody seemed to know. So I canceled my plans, I was not going to the prom this year again, but anyway, I wasn't going, and, um, as it turned out, that Wednesday afternoon, when I went for my afternoon walk, my daily walk, I noticed the people were all downstairs and they, uh, waiting for the bus. And as it turned out, the bus barely got there, and they almost didn't show up at all. This next, um, activity was the Liberty, uh, School, Liberty Junior, and, uh, there was the play. Um, so anyway, we're all waiting, so I ask about the transportation again. "Oh, it's been canceled, no transportation." "What do you mean, there's no transportation?" "There's supposed to be transportation, they promised transportation." So my director gets on the line and, you know, so she cuts back with me. "Oh, there's no tran, the transportation was canceled because there's only three of you guys going." "What do you mean, nobody from Rent, no, Rent a House?" Come to find out, well, my director calls other people, and she comes back, "Oh, Pat, there's going to be transportation, even if it's only the three of you," because of the simple fact they did imply that there was going to be transportation, it's only fair. So, go downstairs, we get the bus, there are people on there from Rent a House. As it turned out, the people actually can, like, they said they didn't want to go, they canceled their plans for going because they were told that the transportation was canceled. So they decided not to go, and that's where it comes back to say that they weren't going, when in fact they did want to go. And there was a good six, seven of us that total that went. But this is what we're talking about, we have, there's, there's nothing for us, and nobody can guarantee us anything as far as transportation. I mean, like, in the future, our suggestions were, in the future, if there's some activity or a play or something, and you cannot actually promise, what you should do is say, "Tr, uh, transportation will be provided, providing we have enough in attendance." And then maybe give, like, an allotted amount, if 10 people show up, or there has to be a minimum of 10 people showing up. I can understand that, and then they say, "All right, we couldn't because there were not 10 people who signed up." But otherwise, then, other, otherwise, you know, we just are not thought about, there's no communication, there's nothing, there's no transportation, period. Everything we, we want, like, we have, it's like, um, pulling teeth to get. And it's like I said, it's like, we're nothing, and we just get swept aside and, "Oh, they'll go away." But we're not going to go away, we'll be back. I mean, every time something like this is going to happen, we're going to be stepping up, maybe we, we're not out in the audience, but somebody will step up, I guarantee it. That's it, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Tammy Williams, I am Human Relations Chairwoman, coming to say that it's May, and hopefully the weather will cooperate. We had scheduled for April 29th and then a rain date of May 6th, our community softball game, and hopefully, we're going to have that rescheduled for May 20th, uh, and we'll have the police department and the fire department kickoff at 10:00. Then we're going to have two following games with community groups, organizations, and residents. So hopefully, everyone will come out, the field is O'Connor, we'll have a couple of food trucks, we'll have a DJ for entertainment, and of course, O'Connor has, um, some additional playgrounds for the little kids, as well as, um, uh, tennis courts, is, tennis courts?
Yeah.
Tennis courts, um, for your entertainment. So we hope that you'll come out and see, um, you know, the community, the fire department, the police department, and have some softball fun. In addition, uh, the Human Relations Commission produced a video, Women of West Orange, to celebrate Women's History Month, and I'm very pleased to say, um, that that video is prepared and will be released and up on the Human Relations website, as well as the Township Medium's social media as well. And thanks to Justin McClure for producing that video, and all of the 20 women councilmen, administrators, just business owners, attorneys, residents, lifelong residents, who came out just to support the community, the township, and talk about women of West Orange. So we hope you'll take a look, we encourage you to take a look, it's exciting, it's fun, it's 11 minutes, uh, just celebrating women in West Orange. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Meyerowitz, 19 Howell Drive. Few different things. Uh, I, now that the new governor doesn't seem to be promoting the drug program that the Governor Christie was always on television pushing, um, I think it's a good time again for West Orange to start promoting its Operation Hope, because, uh, the need is still definitely there, and I think it's a good time to generate income, not income, excuse me, interest, for, for the program. As a matter of fact, I got my first call a couple of weeks ago, I was shocked, I was, I figured I would never, ever get a call, and all of a sudden, "Oh my God, what do I do?" So I went down, and it was a good feeling to help someone, get the process started for him. So if we could, you know, start pushing this, it would definitely help the reputation of West Orange. And I know the police officers who were down there in, in the office with me when I was interviewing this person, they were very enthusiastic and very helpful, and, and they liked doing it, and I think it, you know, gave them a boost too. Um, about the senior transportation, this is just an idea, but why not, is there some kind of credit that the residents of this house could get to use Uber? Wouldn't it make more sense if you have, like, three people or five people to call one or two cars and have, have Uber come out and take them? Because Uber's always there, they're there in three seconds, and you never have to worry that there's going to be there, and you don't have to go through all this, he said, she said, "It's going to be there, it's not going to be there." You know, I'm not a big Uber user, but a few times I've used it, it's, you know, it's an amazing service, and I'm sure there are other services out there that we could use. Um, and you could work out some kind of credit off their rent or something that, if the town were to pay for it, that, I, I don't know, but you could figure that out. Um, then the last thing is, on the agenda tonight, I saw you have this gun resolution, uh, supporting what's going on in the state senate and the state assembly, and I'm not here to argue about that. You know, I think it's just, my opinion is, it's just one of these things that will make you feel good, like, as if you did something, that the state did something, it's only going to affect legal gun owners, it's not going to affect any of the problem with the illegal gun owners who, uh, who are the criminals, but whatever, that's not what I, I would, I was wondering if West Orange Township would considering, would consider setting up a gun training program for the citizens who live in town, run by the police, um, to teach people who are interested in guns about proper handling, maintenance, legal requirements, where to store them. maintenance, legal requirements, where to store them, where to use them, when, when is appropriate to use them, the whole kit and caboodle to, you know, people like me who get nervous that, you know, the world is falling apart and want to protect themselves before the police could get there. And I'm sure there would be a lot of interest in something that would be like a legitimate, bona fide, well-run gun training program. So think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Mark, Jack Sayer is already looking up the Uber stuff, right? Yeah, all the information he needs to decide on what to do. And the county is going to have a pilot program. It's big, all over. Okay, well, visuals reinforce audio. The next step, the survey is done, what's the next step? Okay. My research has revealed that, one, we need an action plan. Examples of the action plan, and I think I've brought them up here before, Princeton, I think Mr. Kaser is familiar with the mayor of Princeton, beautiful action plan, probably going to be used nationally or internationally. This other is the National Aging in Place Council, where they have a toolkit, terrific information, all the steps on what to do. And then you found Augusta, Georgia, terrific plan, people that are involved as part of it, very impressive. What we need next is focus group meetings. We need lots of focus group meetings with the seniors. In all of these plans that I've talked about, in all of these municipalities, all over the country, worldwide, focus groups are an ongoing process. We have to have a part in what you're doing, what you're saying, what you're planning. We need to be, it's us that you're talking about. What we need is a senior advisory board. I spend all of my waking hours doing this, collecting this stuff. It's not my job. I don't get paid for it. And every township, at least in the 27th Legislative District, has a board. Now, whether the mayor wants it or not, he better come to grips with the fact, we need one. Because we don't need people like me running around doing all this stuff. We need a formal, organized, structured group. And it has to start now. We got the information back from the people in the town, they told us what they don't have, what they have, what they want, what everybody else has. Start doing something about it. We just can't keep getting sheets of paper and sending stuff out. As far as that SOMA survey, the mayor was in possession of that for two years. Sent it back to me when I sent it to him. So he had it, and said he didn't want it, he didn't think we needed a survey. So it's not, you weren't blindsided.
I don't say I was.
Well, I know what you meant when you said it. Okay, we need a board. We need a proactive mayor, council, and advisory board. We just can't keep reacting. The survey started it all. We need to start picking up. We've lost a lot of time. We need to get going. Look, we're still having trouble, transportation and communication, the two biggest problems, and it gets worse. It absolutely gets worse. Doesn't get any better. So I don't know what else to do, what else to say. I'm not sharing any of this stuff with anybody, because it's all your job to go look for what I look for. So that you can't say that we didn't show you, or we didn't this. You, it's your job. You need to do this, you need to do this work. That's what you're here for, that's what you get elected for, and what you all get jobs for. Thank you.
Yes? Oh, yes, ma'am.
My name is Lee Saul, and I live at 47 Carterett Street. And the first thing I want to do is thank the town for coming to cut the tree that fell during one of the storms. And then, not, not more than two weeks later, they came to treat the stump, actually take part of the stump out, and then treat it. The men, the members of the team were wonderful. When they cut the tree down, we had hot coffee for them. And when they came to serve the service, the trunk, the, the stump, they didn't want coffee, they wanted something cold, so we had that. They were very efficient, and I thank you, I thank the town for that. The tree was less than 10 feet from the street. Okay, now I have some questions. I attended the meeting, my husband and I attended the meeting that the mayor conducted a week ago, Thursday, I believe it was. And someone made up a whole bunch of questions. I don't know if you're privy to this, I only have one copy, but there are a lot of questions. And my question is about the Public Works facility. Now, I understand, it's our understanding, that the Public Works were allowed to be on property that Prism, the Prism developers, had made available to, to the town. And it's a side street in, very close to the Edison Museum. I'm not sure whether or not there are gas tanks there for the buses, are there?
If you could just finish your comments, and then they'll answer afterwards.
Oh, okay. All right. And so the, the mayor, kind of preparing us for all kinds of undesirable things, mentioned that the Public Works facility and the buses might be parked in the Essex Green area. That's kind of strange use of prime property. And I started to look around, and we saw several large vacant land, not far from the recycle place. It's overgrown with trees, it's on Mount Pleasant Road. It is up on a hill, but there are, there, it, it goes pretty far back. I don't have the exact address. And then, on Eagle Rock, coming, down Eagle Rock about, there's a, there is a development on the right-hand side, or coming from Passaic Avenue, anyway, or, yeah, Passaic Avenue. Anyway, that does, it does, there is a large tract of land there, too. And, and that's flatland. And it seems to me that, that putting the Public Works in that, those kinds of places would be far better than putting it in Essex Green, which is prime property. It's really, it's almost beautiful, the way it comes up on the mountain. Okay, so, but another question I have is why, after all the time, almost eight, it must be more than eight years, that you knew you were in a place where you needed to get out and find another facility? Why did you wait so long?
Finish up your comments, and then they'll answer.
That's it. Those are my questions.
Okay. After public comment is all over, they'll, they'll-
Pardon?
After public comment is all over, then they close public comment, then they'll answer your questions.
Yeah, the last person speaks.
Right.
I see. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Lauren Swetvilaus, Prospect Avenue. I'm in a great mood tonight, so I'm not going to offend anybody, I'm certain. Spring's in the air, and our Green West Orange is riding high. We're really happy about Mavis's decision to pull their application from the zoning board, so they're not moving into that very close residential area where the China Gourmet Restaurant is, or was. So we'll see what goes there by the developer. And so our Green West Orange, we've been active, holding some meetings. We've been using Total Wine up at the Essex Green Shopping Center. They have a great education room there, and they've been very cordial and open to us coming. It's been fabulous. So our next meeting is May 16th. We're going to have a community network, social, hoping to get some of the organizations out, like West Orange Cares About Schools, the West Orange African Heritage Organization, Friends of the West Orange Library, Essex Rising, New Jersey 11th. We'd like to get some community organizations out, so we can kind of have people meet, residents meet them, find out what's happening in the town, and get involved and advocate for their, their, their green, their safe, and their affordable West Orange, which we want to see. And then in June, on the 16th, we have a resident who's part of our group, who's opening up her garden to the public, and there'll be a guest presenter. She's going to do a native pollinator presentation about how to create gardens that are with native plants to attract pollinators, to help our community. She's Kim Ariman of Echo Beneficial, she'll be presenting. And there'll be free native seedlings for everyone to take home, too. So all that information's on our website, which is www.rgreenwestorange.org, or OGWO.org. It was, on a separate note, it was a pleasure to meet the developer that purchased the Turtle Brook Inn, seeing Councilman Cirillo there. It was a little deceptive, the flyer that went out, it was very short notice, that talked about that residents that come out, their input will be taken in and considered, when clearly the developer already had a plan. And I don't blame him, Rocco Varma, we've texted back and forth, perfectly nice guy, owns the preschool already, on going out to Florham Park, the Primrose. So, I mean, he has a plan, it'll be 70 to, 70 units to 80 units of luxury townhome rentals there, and then the preschool, and it's going to do really well. He'll be very successful there. So going forward, I'm curious, I don't know what the guidelines are for affordable housing that he would have to abide by. I know the plans aren't before Planning Board or the Zoning Board yet, but that's always something to keep in mind. And on another separate note, since I have a couple minutes, with regards to firearms, I know Mr. Meyerowitz had mentioned that. A friend of mine lost her son at Sandy Hook, and, and part of that, marching to Washington and finding out what's happening here in our own town, I applied for a firearms permit just to see what the process was like. And I was really pleased that it took a year for me to get approval, with mental health checks, and actually friends getting phone calls in New Mexico, and your police department called, and that would never happen out here in New Mexico. So that was great. I was a little dismayed that the police department and the fire department don't know who the owners and which houses have guns, because I would think that going to a home, you would want to know if there's firearms or ammunition in the home, and if it's on fire, or if the police are responding to a call. They know who has the permit, but if someone comes in, they don't know all the different homes that have firearms. So that's a separate note. And that's about it. So, thank you.
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. I just want to share a few upcoming events that the county is having. First of all, on this past Saturday, we had the Household Houses Waste Collection Day. We had about 1,500 residents bring stuff and participate in that event, so that was a very good event for us. The trailing event for that is the, is May 19th, which is the Computer and Electronics Recycling Day, which is 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at the same site in Cedar Grove. Residents can just bring their items. We will have teams of people there who can just, you'll open your trunk, they'll take the stuff out, and you're in and out in less than five minutes. Want to make it as easy as possible for everyone to participate in that. On May 24th, at SS County College, we're having our annual job fair. And the unique thing about this job fair is that all the employers, or potential employers, who have tables, display tables that day, have to confirm that they are looking for people to hire, so that when you bring your resumes and you do your first impression contacts, you know that everyone there has a potential job opening that you can fill. So if anyone, if you know of anyone, it's, it's open to the public. Again, that goes from 10 until 3:00, SS County College Gym. If you visit sscountynj.org, if you look in the events, on the event section, you can register ahead of time. One of the thing that we, one of the things we do also with this event is we track people who come to the event to see if they have obtained employment, and then how long that employment sticks, so that we can tailor our programs and work with the business community to create and enhance, and bring, enhance jobs for people who are looking for them. And then finally, just on June 2nd, which is a Saturday, of course, it's very busy in West Orange that day, but it's also our annual, 16th Annual Open House at Turtleback Zoo, which is 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There is free admission all day, so if you don't come between those two hour, those four hours of the event, you still get free admission to the zoo. We'll have various tables and activities for people to learn about county government. And then also, I just remember one other thing. On June 15th, we start our farmer's market, our farmer's markets for seniors. This is going to be at Cedar Grove Park in Cedar Grove, which is 199 Fairview Avenue. That's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Seniors can call our Division of Senior Services for more information, which is 973-395-8375. And that's just the beginning of the schedule. I haven't gotten the complete schedule, but that's the first day.
And what does that mean, though, farmer's market for seniors?
Seniors can come to the farmer's market. If you're income eligible, you can sign up for vouchers, which get you free produce. And, or if you get the vouchers, you can either use them there, or you can also use them at participating supermarkets. We encourage seniors who come to use them there, because you are getting fresh food, nutritious food, at a regular, you know, at a, probably a better price than you would get in a supermarket.
Can they sign up right there on that day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, as with all our senior events, if, and throughout the year, of course, you can, if you do need transportation, you can call our Special Transportation Office, which is 973-737-7200. That's a, a little bit different number that I've shared in the past. It's, gets you to the same place, just a little more easy to remember than the previous one.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, any questions?
Anthony, first of all, thank, can you do me a favor?
Yes.
Next time they have the event, like, recycling, you know, and the, which was great, they took it all in my car and had it get out. They always, but they always ask you to fill out a survey as you're driving. So it really isn't-
Well, you're supposed to stop.
You can't.
It's not a sign and, it's not a sign and drive, it's stop, sign, and then drive.
It's impossible. Just a quick question. It's a great thing about the senior farmer's market, is there any way of looking at, putting it, you know, maybe a couple of times here in the township up at, you know, Cherry Lane? I mean, it is a park, and, I mean, and not just having it down in Cedar Grove, you know, or-
We can look at that, yes.
Have they ever looked at, like, having a farmer's market here?
Generally, we have them at county locations, so they're in county parks. The South Mountain Complex is a county park, so it would just be logistics on what day would be available and all that, so that's something we can look at.
Something we, and anything we could do to move it along, I think it'd be great, especially for our residents, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Any other comments? Seeing now we're going to close public comment, and if anyone would like to respond?
Council President, just want to-
Yes, sir.
-remind everybody that in-
Council President, just want to remind everybody that in addition to affordable housing litigation, we also have Essex Green redevelopment litigation going on, so you need to not talk about that subject matter as well.
Thank you for that reminder. I'm going to go work backwards here. I just wanted to thank Anthony for the hazardous waste and computer recycling, and what we hear is that the program is so efficient, and thank you for doing that. And we had talked about, at a couple of council meetings ago, about computers and recycling them, and if people are upgrading their computers, possibly using them. I have calls out to the Board of Ed about people refurbishing. There's a business on Main Street that could refurbish computers, too, and maybe we can collaborate something on, with the computers that are being recycled or upgraded, that we can reuse locally. I spoke to people in East Orange, they don't have such a program, and I thought, you know, just trying to field that. I'll talk to you more about that. Mr. Svetviles, thank you for your comments. As you heard, there's not much we can talk about. Ms. Saul, thank you for recognizing the Department of Public Works. They go unnoticed so often and yet do so much. You had mentioned about using, I'm thinking, you're thinking 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. That is six acres of open space that has been preserved by the township, and there is an approved pollinator garden, eight varied gardens in that space, if we're talking about the same space on Mount Pleasant Avenue, that you were thinking about relocating. I appreciate all the creative ideas that came out this evening, but that particular space is preserved, preserved land. I have to agree with Mrs. Morelli about an action plan. Since what we did hear out of the survey was communication, and communication about transportation, I agree that an action plan needs to be put in place to coordinate the, not only the senior housing, but the residents and many of which responded to that survey and addressed that concern about communication in particular. And there just could be a better job, and through an action plan, to put measures in place for that to happen. I see Patricia just stepped out, but I don't think that transportation should be based on the number of people that sign up, it should be based on people that want to go. It's unfortunate that, it was so unfortunate for her to comment, to say that it just seemed so confusing, that it was on one minute, canceled the next, and yet people were using transportation. I think that's very unfortunate, and an action plan would be very helpful. Mark, I'm just going to agree, I agree with you on the gun control. I hope I do get support of my counsel on this resolution. These are, just going backwards, these are six assembly bills that have already been passed, they are now in the Senate, so the resolution that is presented this evening is supporting those assembly bills that have already been passed. And I'll just mention, it's Assembly Bill A2758, which strengthens the standards to obtain a permit to carry a handgun, and I'm glad to hear that Lauren said it takes a year to do. Assembly Bill A2761, which would lower the cap from fifteen to ten amounts of rounds allowed in a single magazine. Assembly Bill A1217, creating a specially designed gun violence restraining order that would allow persons weapons seized and/or a person prohibited from purchasing firearms for up to one year if they present a threat to themselves or others. Assembly Bill A1181, which would allow law enforcement officers to seize weapons from a person determined by a health, mental health professional to pose a threat of serious harm to the patient or others. Legislation, Assembly Bill A2757, which would require background checks on private gun sales within the state of New Jersey, and Assembly Bill A2759, which would ban armor-piercing bullets. So, I do hope we do get support and at least see some movement in that direction. The one thing that I disagree, I appreciate your comments on that, but I, the one thing I disagree with you is that we are involved in Operation Hope. The governor, instated, put in place a state office to address that. So, you know, I passed all of that information, I was working on a grant with the lieutenant in charge of Operation Hope for a community impact application. We hope that they can be nominated for that particular program, and doing the research for that application, we found that there is a state office in place that Governor Murphy put, has put in place. So, so yes, that is being addressed. Heidi left, and I noticed she did not have on her baseball sneakers, she had on silver flip flops, so the weather, we do hope the weather cooperates for May 20th to finally have the HRC Community Softball. It's been postponed twice now, and I do appreciate the initiative of the HRC on the video for West Orange. Mr. Daniels talked about the area needed redevelopment, and Sally mentioned the trees, two hundred trees. My resolution doesn't have the parameters on what they are, but we can certainly get that information from our forester. And I just do want to mention that there has been no change in the Planning Department on the steep slope ordinance, so there just has been no change. Anyone else? That's all I have. Thank you to Anthony.
No, no, go ahead, you first.
Sure?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Hill?
Yes. A lot of policy issues presented today by the public, thank you for coming out. Just, I have a few questions for the administration, just on the issue of the Public Works Building. We had Nassau come up and talk about the property of Ridge Road in Mount Pleasant, possibly, as a potential location. I mean, just something to think about, you know, that's, yeah, I mean, residents are asking that that lot, or those acres be preserved, maybe public use, maybe.
It's a private, private street.
Oh, wait, wait, we're talking about two different things. You're talking about on the corner of Prospect and Mount Pleasant, Ridge Road?
I'm talking about Mount Pleasant and Ridge Road, yes.
That's privately owned?
I'm just asking if that is for consideration.
Oh, for Public Works?
That's for sale. Public Works, that's all.
Ridge Road is a private road.
I understand that, but the homes are not private.
The road is private, we don't own that space.
We don't own the land.
That's correct. That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, has the town considered purchasing that property? I'm asking, that property, you know, we have members of the public that have asked for the township to purchase that property, for matters of preservation. Has the town considered that? That's all I'm asking. I know we don't own the land, and I know Ridge Road is a private road.
People have asked to purchase it for open space, not to put the DPW garage.
Right. My question is, is something to think about, something to consider as options?
We will not put the DPW garage there, I'll tell you that right now.
Okay.
Which you couldn't do with open space funds anyway, because it would be open space and green acres.
So, that's relief to, you know, to our neighbor here.
Well, they paved the road.
Correct. Preserve the land. So, I just wanted to point out and give an example of how difficult it is to make these decisions with respect to finding public facilities, that there's precious open space out there that we need to preserve, so when we make a determination of where this building is going to go, some people may agree, some people will disagree, but at the end of the day, we'll try to find the right balance. I don't agree with the Public Works Building going to Ridge Road, I would disagree with that, but that's just an example of how difficult it is to make a decision. Just wanted to make that point. The second question is on the, on that invoice that was brought up. I did look at the resolution, and there was a cap to that invoice of 7,500, so it seems that we may have gone over. The actual resolution capped that contract at $7,500, and the purchase order says 8,600. So, perhaps there was something else added, or there may be an explanation?
The resolution also authorizes the planner to move forward with the plan, once he has submitted the, his evaluation to the council. So, when we went back and looked at the bills, indeed, while we did spend more than the amount that was specified for the initial, for his initial work, the authorization was also within, without a cap for him to work on the plan. And so, the hours that were billed above and beyond that were for the plan, and not for the initial work.
Okay, so there was additional work, you're saying?
Well, no, it was just two phases. First thing, you know, the first part was going through and preparing the report for the Planning Board and for the Plan Board to Council to consider, and this recommendation to the council. Also, within that, the council's resolution authorized the planner, then, once he had completed that work, to move forward with the plan. So, he did some work on the plan, and as part of that, the extra, the additional billing was for the plan, was for the plan, not for the part that was capped.
My suggestion is that we should maybe have an attachment, a memo to that work, a purchase order, so that it doesn't give the impression, as the speaker mentioned, that we violated the approval.
Yeah, I think the resolution probably could have been clearer, but it certainly was in there.
Thank you for that explanation. And then, the speaker also spoke about an Oprah request, and just for the sake of conversation or explanation, Oprah requests need to be responded within seven workdays. If not, we need to ask for an extension, or, you know, and there has to be a reason given. And lastly, with respect to redactions, there is laws that cover that, and allow municipalities to redact for certain circumstances. Should an individual or a speaker or a protester not be happy with that, you know, the speaker mentioned the Government Records Council as an alternative. So, I don't think it's a matter of hiding anything, but rather trying to analyze whether or not the parameters of the law have been followed with respect to redaction, and I'm confident that the legal department has done the diligence, and it was done according to the letter of the law. I will check that, I will ask to see that, just confirm, but I'm certain that that has been addressed within the parameters. The public may not agree with redaction, but at the end of the day, the law does allow for municipalities or government entities to redact for several circumstances and reasons. Thank you for clarifying the steep slope ordinance issue, that it's not being touched, that it's not under consideration. And lastly, on the Daglen House issue with transportation, actually, two more issues. That seems to be like a local issue with the Daglen House, and not a transportation issue. It seems like it's a matter of communication with the property manager. And sitting on that board, I will talk to the property manager and find out, you know, why the speaker felt that communication was lacking. Even though transportation was extended and provided, it seems that there was a break in communication as to whether or not it was canceled, or whether or not transportation was available. So, we have to be, I'm not making any assumptions until I hear the other side, but we're going to provide transportation, and we should go, you know, try to address that. We have to make sure that we communicate properly with residents, so that they can expect that service for these functions. My last issue was about the, Ms. Morelli spoke about what's the next step on the survey, and, you know, an action plan, and I was thinking, Council President, about the participatory budgeting process. Perhaps that's one venue that the lobby, or the senior citizen lobby, or the organization or a group can take to try to, try to get the necessary funding to get as much of those requests implemented in the budget. So, the participatory budgeting process is something I would recommend for any group of seniors that may want to get together and seek additional services that we're outlining that. Those are my comments, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. A lot here. Ms. Malanga, thank you for raising many good questions and many good issues. In, in answer to your question about the affordable housing obligation, any commercial development in the state of New Jersey requires the developer to provide funds and/or the actual housing, affordable housing. So, no matter what happens, everyone is supposed to, everyone is required to provide funds for affordable housing, anywhere in New Jersey. With regards to downtown Edison redevelopment, you are correct, there was no affordable housing construction in Phase One. That was pushed back to Phase Two, and there is a building that's going to be, that's proposed to be built as part of the governing documents that we previously discussed haven't been signed yet by the, by the redeveloper to create affordable housing as part of that plan. And that pushes back the obligation that could have been required for Phase One into Phase Two. And with regards to the West Essex Highlands litigation, that Mr. Kizer properly said is in litigation and it is in mediation, I want to just be very careful in just mentioning a few things that are public and that are facts. As you know, there is a resolution on tonight's agenda where the administration is proposing to hire a traffic study consultant, basically to review the traffic study that was provided by West Essex Highlands. And I know that I have worked in the past with the administration to get more facts up online and properly vetted, so that they're just public facts and do not really have to do with the litigation or the mediation, which is confidential at this point. For example, it's a fact, because it's part of the litigation, that there's a second intervenor that's been allowed into the, into the mediation, into the litigation, and just further complicating things. Mr. Daniel, thanks very much, oh, he's not here. Mr. Daniel raised a bunch of good issues, and I would like the administration as much as possible to be able to respond to, not so much the, some of the comments that expressed his opinion, but on the facts, on some of the issues he raised. And I just wanted to follow up, Mr. Gross, on your, your explanation about having to do with the purchase order for Mr. Greigle. And I don't know the particulars of this, but Mr. Daniel provided the purchase order, and the purchase order is marked "paid," and it's marked with the date of the order of November 29th, 2017. That suggests to me that it was paid on or about that, that time, and you are correct, in the resolution, it did say that he is also authorized to continue, but the plan was not authorized by the council until well into 2018, the plan itself, not the study, which obviously he did do, but the plan itself was not approved by the council until after that date, I'm well after that date. So, I'm not sure what's going on, but it, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot here, because, you know, in an $80 million budget, you don't always know stuff off the top of your head, but perhaps at the next council meeting, we could have a further discussion about some of these issues.
Well, I mean, I can answer your question specifically. You are right, the council didn't approve moving forward with the plan until later than that, but the council did approve a resolution, authorizing them to do the work before they approved the plan. So, the planner did...
Approved the study.
Pardon me?
Did you mean before they approved the study?
Before they approved the study, and then to move forward with the plan. So, you did authorize him in that resolution. He did some work, not a lot, he did some work towards that. I have not had conversations with him to... I have not had conversations with him to, in terms of, of what specific work he had done. We have, you know, invoices that we checked and clearly the invoices that we have identify what was for the plan and what was for the study. And the study did not exceed the amount and the plan, which was, he was authorized to move forward, was, is a separate, a separate bill.
Yeah, I, I just have to say, when I looked at that resolution, my, my impression was, he's not going to move forward with a plan until he's authorized, then a plan was authorized. It had to come back to the council in order to be authorized to move ahead with the plan. Otherwise, he would have just been wasting money if the council hadn't approved the plan.
I, I can't speak to why he moved forward with it. I mean, I don't know whether there was some, some particular reason that he did that. I'm sure there was. I had, I wasn't involved with that. All I know from, from a processing of, you know, purchase orders and invoices, it was, it was authorized. So it was paid. Again, it was not, you know, it's not, it was not an enlarged amount, but it certainly was above and beyond the amount that you were anticipating based on, on looking at just the study. It was, you know, it was processed inconsistent with the resolution authorizing the work. And that's really much more to say than that.
Okay.
I mean, I understand your questions, but I can't answer those.
Okay. Perhaps a start would be to get all of Mr. Greigle's invoices and just please send them to the council so we can start sort of digging in on that a little bit more. And Mr. Daniel also asked some other questions about what was the follow-up on the audit findings? So I'd like to.
Well, I'll just say that, that, you know, we, we're just finishing up another audit and we'll, you know, we'll be bringing that to you soon and there'll, there'll be whatever information. We haven't had to sit down yet on that with them. And I can tell you that the two are not related, you know, the two situations that he's looking at. I can also tell you that what the auditors tell us, and this is not to minimize the importance or the impact of that, but these particular issues are, are issues that every municipality suffers with because just as, as a clear example, you know, we, we may have purchase orders for auto supplies that limit for, for $5,000 and when we run over that $5,000 and I got a, we have a police car down and we need to get it on the road, sometimes somebody makes a decision to get those parts and get it on the road before, and I'm, before we actually get a purchase order. Now, they should again get a purchase order? Absolutely they do, but sometimes those decisions get made and that's unfortunate. But on the other hand, from a, you know, in, in terms of looking at the mistakes that people make, mistakes that are economical and, and something that we know would be moving forward anyway, it sort of doesn't raise to the same level as some other more blatant mistakes. Having said that, auditors don't make those valuations. You know, whatever the documents say, the documents say, and that's what they report on. So again, I'm not minimizing the importance of it. I'm just saying that that particular comment is a common comment because it's, it's particularly difficult to enforce. We do actually pretty well with it. Again, there's an awful lot of municipalities that get that comment. I don't know if there's any more to add to it other than we'll see how we do in the next audit.
Well, if Mr. Greigle spent his time getting a police car back on the road, then I'm, I'm not going to be nearly as worried, but I don't think that was the situation.
Well, no, and that's what I'm saying. This, well, I did say that. Mr. Greigle's situation is not related to that.
Oh, I see the point you're making.
Mr. Greigle's situation was, he had an, this council authorized him to move forward, he billed appropriately and we paid appropriately. It's completely, that, that is not related to getting bills or going and ordering something before we issue a purchase order.
Council President, a point of clarification, if I may, to the speaker, just a question to follow up. Just explain what that means, encumbering the funds prior to authorizing a purchase order, maybe that.
Look, the, the bottom line is that a lot of times we have emergencies in this town. Things are done in an emergency situation prior to the purchase order being signed. Ninety percent of those issues are emergency issues. Ninety percent of them. Okay? Am I, am I wrong on that?
Vast majority, vast majority.
That's what happens. And it's either to get a car back on the road or a snowplow or leaves or whatever. That's what happens. And as John says, we can't control that internally and it's really, not to minimize it, but it happens in every municipal town in this state.
Government entities.
Every one of them. And it happens strictly on emergency situations. Now, is there times when maybe someone did it internally in their department and, and the purchase order wasn't cut until two days later? That happens also. But I'm telling you, ninety percent of the time, it's, it's based on emergency situations.
We issue about 15,000 purchase orders a year. We write around 7,500 checks a year. There's a lot of volume going on here and you, you can, by definition, people make mistakes and they make errors or, or we have situations where we, we don't, we don't touch all the bases in the timeframe that, that, that we should. We work hard to try to minimize that.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this also happens in the Newark Housing Authority?
It happens in. I'm going to give you an example.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I can answer that question. It's Sunday morning and this, this is true, February, a pipe breaks and ruptures and I have to call the, you know, the plumber, emergency contractor, $95,000 underground steam pipe leaking, senior citizens, we have eight-story buildings, you know, upset and we have to address it quickly before sand goes inside the system and the sand damages or, or it really gets inside the radiators. So we have to be there right away. The purchase order is not going to be cut until like a day or two later. So those, that's kind of like.
That's a perfect example. When you have an emergency on the weekend, nobody's cut, nobody's here. So you can't cut the purchase order until Monday, but you have to, you have to fix what happened on Saturday. So you go out and do it, say, you do what you have to do so that nothing gets worse and then on Monday, the purchase order gets cut. However, when the auditor looks at it, he sees that the work got done on Saturday and you didn't cut the purchase order till Monday. It's just a flaw in, in, in the, in the process.
And if I could just add, if you're an online councilman.
Sure.
Ten years at the school board, ten audits there, same situation. You know, things happen on the weekend and.
Same thing late at night. Something happens late at night, it has to be done. You're not cutting the purchase order till the following day. It still doesn't comply with the, with, with, with what it's supposed to be, but we do.
And I, and I can add, if I'm allowed, Council President, Councilman, even on the joint meeting with, you know, waste management and flowage and everything else, it's, they've had times where in the middle of the night or in the weekend, you know, filtration system goes down, they got to start it right back up for EPA requirement. So those things happen, Councilman.
Okay, we got a trifecta here. If you want to, if you want to weigh in, then we'll, we'll have a full house.
Okay, no.
Well, five of a kind. Okay, I think we drained that for tonight.
I just want to ask the question though, has corrective action been taken? Because that was one of the comments here about internal controls to monitor.
Always take, whenever we get.
Yeah, this is from last year. This is, this is, and this is our corrective action plan and we put in, we've put in controls to monitor when, more frequently to catch when it occurs so that we can try to identify what happens a lot of times as they occur and then somebody gets a purchase order, but maybe there's not a document that says, oh, by the way, this was an emergency. You know, that kind of thing. So we're doing, we're doing more reviews within the staffing levels that we have in order to, to monitor it better.
Okay, back on track. Ms. Galis, I'm sorry you have had so much trouble with transportation. I don't know if she's still there, but you've raised several very good issues relating to, I guess, transportation and communication. I'd like, if we could, Mr. Sayers, to have someone take a look at these specific instances and, and sort of.
I actually know what happened. What happened was there were, we were asked to do transportation to a, an event and there were actually three people who signed up for the event. And based on the fact that there were only three people, they canceled the transportation. I got a, I got a phone call.
Excuse me, who's they? When you say they canceled?
Our transportation, the health department.
Okay.
Because there were only three people and we can't take a bus off the road for that usually. So what happened was I got a phone call from Mrs. Morelli. She spoke to me about the issue. I went back to the, to our transportation dispatcher and I said, do we have an extra bus available? He said, I can probably pull one off the road. I said, look, based on the fact that we committed to doing this, even though there's only three people, let's do it. That's where the confusion came in. Because then I had spoken to Debbie Salinardi and she had told me she had had two people and there was one person from the Rent House. There were only three people originally and that's why it was canceled. I told Debbie, I said, give them a call back, tell them we're going to send a bus out and we, we are going to pick them up and we're going to take them. And I told Mrs. Morelli to speak to her friend in the, at the, at Rent House and tell her that we will come and pick her up also. And if there's anyone else that wants to come, tell her to call them and we'll send the bus there. So that's why in the end, there were probably six or seven people that we wound up picking up. And I'm the one who made the recommendation that from now on, when we make that decision, we should put a number on that decision. And, and I think that's the only way you can do this because we can't, there, if it was a bad time, we weren't, we can't pull a bus off the road because we have certain routes that we're picking people up at ShopRite and taking them all over the place. So the bottom line is what we're thinking about and we haven't made any decisions yet is that if we're going to do this in the future, we're going to put a number on it. And the number might be 10 people. If there's not 10 people, then we can't do the transportation. And the good thing about that, and I had this discussion with Debbie, is that you have people internally who will be saying, well, there's only three of us, we got to get five more people to come.
That's true.
You see what I'm saying? And believe it or not, it doesn't happen that way. And, and I understood exactly what she was saying. The confusion came because we did change it. And we changed it because I felt, and I spoke to the mayor and he felt the same way, because we had originally made the commitment, whether there was three people or two people, we should pick them up. So we pulled the bus off the road, we picked them up and we basically were able to get done what we had to do that day. But that's what the confusion was about.
Okay. She had actually, actually spoken about two different incidents. Which one were you talking about?
The second incident, I'm not aware of the second incident. The first incident was the one with the play at the junior high school.
Okay.
So I was not aware of the first incident.
Okay, if you could just check into that and preface that report back to us.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Williams has left, but I just want to applaud her efforts on trying to put together this, this softball tournament and the weather just hasn't, just hasn't cooperated, but hopefully we'll get it done soon. Mr. Meyerowitz, thanks very much for your suggestion about Uber. It's just coincidentally that we, that the administration is taking a look at, or actually the county is taking a look at it as a pilot program. So I, I think it's a, a good idea if you could just figure out the funding for it. Ms. Morelli, I agree with everything that you say and as you know, I had proposed to create a, an ordinance to create a senior citizens advisory council and I'm more than happy to work with my colleagues here on the council if we want to revive that and make any changes and, and discuss it. So I'm, I'm very open, I'm very open to that. But you just continue to raise very, have very good issues. Thank you. Ms. Saul, good to see you here and, and thank you also for raising some good questions, especially about the recycling center. You're not the first one to have that, that idea and I'm hoping at some point that the administration will be able to come back to us and say whether the recycling center might be an appropriate place to put the public works, the public works facility. Mr. Svet Velas, again, thanks, thanks very much for your comments. And Mr. Beglese, as always, thank you, very informative and helpful information. Thank you, Council President.
Any others? Any other comments?
Michelle, you want to go first?
No, you could go.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Council President, thank you, my colleagues. Sally, you know, you asked about the trees. Hi, it's good to see you again. That's a tree on Main Street about a few months ago, about four or five months ago, Council President McCartney, Megan Brill and the town forester and a few others did a walk of Main Street.
Tree in the turf.
And to do a tree on it to see the conditions of the trees and yes, a number of them are in bad shape. I don't know what's going to come out of that, but I would like to see, of course, trees changed and replanted. Also note, please, that anything that we do in pedestrian safety, particularly with our road diet and the complete streets includes new streetscape, which includes new trees. So that is an important part of, of the issue. So I'd like to be aware that we are, particularly in pedestrian safety and traffic, looking forward to with the greenery of our township. So to put your mind at ease, and you know, we're not going to use Ridgeway Avenue for, you know, after you paved it, so, to do it. So, but thank you for your comments. With the senior citizen transportation, all that, I mean, the thing is, and Rosary can probably vouch for this too, what I'm saying is, we need to get our Dagen House and our Rent House, our, our members to talk a little more, you know, to be a little more communicative and to find out who's doing what, when, where and why. And I'm sure we can put that together and especially we're trying to regenerate the Rent House Senior Citizen Board to get more communications, find out what's going on. We've done a lot. I mean, Rosary can't deny, we got a lot of things going at Rent House, you know, the new painting, the construction, the renovations that are really moving forward. So Rent House is going to become a real prime example of senior living, but the only thing is, is communications and that's, that's what we need to do. Ms. Saul, thank you very much for, for your comments. Mark, thank you for your comments. To Tammy, I wish Tammy was here, but you know what? I just have one disagreement. I hear about all these videos that are going on, but I hear about it second or third level. I mean, all these videos that are being done and everything else, I don't hear about them until a council meeting or somebody tells me they did a video. And that kind of bothers me in communications that these are being designated to specific people and not to the entire council or not to the entire, you know, community. So that is one, I wish Tammy was still here, that's my question.
It was women in West Orange.
It doesn't matter. I have a daughter and I, I'm sorry, but I have a daughter and I have a wife. If they don't count, well, you know, but women in West Orange, what about men in West Orange?
It was women's month.
But thank you. What was I saying? Mr. Daniels, his audit, I'm glad Mr. and Mr. Gross, I'm sure we'll see the next audit coming out with the corrective action and things that were bad that are now been corrected. And when, when's the next audit coming out, Mr. Gross?
We're waiting to sit down now, so.
Okay.
It should, it'll be done before the end of June.
Right. And my question to you, Mr. Gross, is, is it possible that, you know, audits from other towns are available, that we can look at seeing what other towns are facing in their audit discrepancies and audit deficiencies?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Okay. I just like to measure up, you know, people say about this and West Orange.
I'll leave that to you.
You'll leave it to me? Okay. I'll do that. And other than that, I look forward to people coming out to our pedestrian safety meetings. We got some really exciting things going on, particularly with the road diet. Also, the road diet includes a new crosswalk at Edison Middle School. We're really happy about that, the new lightage. I'll have some more updates for people with Alyssa Drive and the new traffic safety control on Pleasant Valley Way. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman.
Not to beat the audit to, to a pulp here, but in regards to purchase orders and knowing that you are, have implemented the action plan, I know Ms. Cornival was very proactive in, in, I guess, scolding all us, all the commissioners on the different committee chairs, because there were some of, of our commissioners who, you know, went out innocently volunteering their, their time and buying items for various events that they were having and not waiting for the purchase order to be issued. So I know all was told not to do that. So I know, well, we do have a working action plan, but that was one of the items I remember from the audit, so.
I wasn't going to mention.
Huh?
I wasn't going to.
There were a couple I was going to mention.
But you know what? You don't realize, little things like that make the audit, you know? Again, I laugh about the 10 years on the school board. Every year, school activity is fun, you know, again, same, same thing. And you have volunteers out there and trying to rein everybody in to follow, follow the rules. I'll start with Mrs. Malanga this evening, you know, you know, thank you for your comments. And just so you know, I, I mean, the reason why we are in litigation is because, you know, we're up here and we're not happy with the, with the way things were going with the developers and, and having to, you know, teaming up with the fair share housing people. So, you know, I know I felt that we were, you know, being put in a box and, you know, and that's why we have litigation. I can't comment it other than that, but we are, you know, doing what we, we need to do. So I, I mean, you know, our hands are tied. The hardest thing as a public official is that when you can't comment and can't give you details on things, and I've always been respective of our attorney's advice, so I won't elaborate when I, I need, not need to, but I just wanted to share that. We, you know, and I could say all of us are frustrated by that. by that. But that is tough, and I'm not gonna ever put the township in jeopardy by misspeaking. I was also at the meeting for Essex Green, as you know, I think I was, I know Councilman Kocoviac was also there. You know, the mayor was, asked some really tough questions. I thought that he's very transparent that evening. And answered a lot of questions. And tonight, we hear from, you know, I have my comments all over the place, but, you know, I know I heard, you know, we weren't, you know, why haven't we been preparing for Public Works to move them? But yet, you know, well, why did you have these plans to move, you know, for Public Works? So, you know, there's been due diligence, and that's, you know, what needs to be done in advance. And you may not always agree on maybe the direction the administration may be, you know, taking us in. But I thought he was very transparent. I think that, you know, keep asking questions, because I know I appreciate a lot of the questions that were asked, and learned a few things. So, you know, we're here for that, and I appreciate that. But the one thing I don't appreciate is when folks come up here and always making accusations, like we're, you know, we're trying to hide something. You know, sometimes things appear that way, and shame on us, especially if we don't itemize our purchase order from the planner. So little things we could do to help ourselves, note to self, Mr. Gross. But, so I could see that time to time, but, you know, making accusations isn't always necessary. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. But I do appreciate the questioning. Ms. Morelli, round and round we go. Okay, so I'm gonna start with the Soma. Yes, I was not blindsided. You did come up with 10 questions for a shorter version of what South Orange Maplewood did. And I thought we had a thoughtful conversation of, you know, we were gonna go with the Montclair State version. It was longer. So again, I'm not gonna go back on the process, but yes, I do agree, there was that original survey that the mayor did see. And, but, you know, we all made a decision, which I thought was a good decision, because we are moving forward. And yes, there needs to be an action plan, of course. Right now, the Health Department is working on a grant for Partners in Health for a larger amount of money. Now, I know you wanna talk about advisory board. I myself have no problem working with advisory boards, but I'm gonna tell you this, and I see it happen with my public relations commission. It gets frustrating, because you have these boards, and at the end of the day, you have to, you know, we're not administrators. They're the administrators. So the boards can have great ideas, and they could wanna implement a million ideas, but it's up to administration and the departments to implement those ideas. So I do think we are in desperate need, and even not just myself, but talking with Ms. De Nova, Mrs. Duffy, Mrs. Ayavina, or smaller committee, of a volunteer coordinating position to kinda group everybody together, and that's gonna be part of this grant. So they're formulating a plan, and they will share it with you. So our work's not done. I, you know, I know they haven't communicated or brought more folks in. I'm hoping we're gonna take advantage this summer of the pool. You know, Mr. Keo has been very gracious, and you also have been helpful in organizing little mini seminars at the Township Pool. And I think that's been a really great venue. And we look forward to, maybe you could have, well, maybe, I wrote it down in capital letters, conversation on utilizing transportation, so we don't have folks come in like they did this evening again, feeling bad that there's miscommunication with the Transportation Department. I also have a few other ideas on how to straighten that out that I'll share with Mr. Sayers tomorrow morning. But, you know, there are plans already. Health Department jumped on working with Unico. They're gonna be opening up next to the Toby Cat Center, a gardening program for the residents. That was, Unico had donated beautiful plots and a little gardening space right next to the center. If you've been, I know you've been there. And it was for the special needs students in the school district. Unfortunately, schools stopped utilizing that garden. And now the Health Department's gonna, their senior service department's gonna pick that up and offer a nice gardening program. And we spoke with Anthony Vecchio, who the, our chief, our new chief, whose dad, his dad was, he originated the initial garden, and it was in his name with, he worked hard on it with Unico. So that now is gonna be dedicated to use for our senior programming. So look forward to that. So, you know, things have been done. Again, I'm not gonna argue with you about communication, but, you know, I just hope folks don't keep thinking that, you know, we don't care, that nothing's being done. In this budget, that we're going to be having, Mr. Gross, I believe we're gonna have a budget presentation next, our next session. Okay, I'm very excited about that. We're gonna have a full budget presentation with the screen and everything. But in that budget presentation, we have budgeted a part-time driver, and that will help with transportation. So, you know, that will help. Again, it's a communication, but we also need a part-time driver. As you know, you had sent us all the Uber information. I know I was on the phone myself with Uber and picked up the phone with the GoGo, and the, you know, marketing person had called me back, and I know Mr. Sayers is working on a few things. So hopefully, that will be something we could help distribute the information on. So things are in the works. I'm sorry that the transportation was messed up, but I think, Mr. Sayers, we should check with, in regards to the senior citizen prom. I couldn't go this year, but I believe maybe the school board provided the busing for that. They usually do for the prom. So maybe, you know, maybe that's where the miscommunication was. But again, we can work on improvements. Action plan will be formulated, and hopefully, when, you know, we'll be able to get a grant which will help solve a lot of our issues in regards to funding. And that's about it. And Mark and the other speakers, thank you for coming down. Council President.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting April 24, 2018.
Consent.
Consent.
Report of Township Officers, Municipal Court, March 2018.
Consent.
Consent.
Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Counselor, on this end?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to pull Agenda Item B, Resolution 114-18, Resolution Authorizing the Township to Retain CME Associates to Repair Traffic Study as Part of the Ongoing Declaratory Judgment Litigation Related to the Township's Affordable Housing Obligations.
Okay.
That's it, though.
Anything else?
That's it. Jerry?
I do ask for my colleague's support on Resolution C, which is a resolution to support the passage and adoption of the Gun Control legislation into law. The assembly bills I read before that are headed to the Senate.
Counselman?
I have nothing to pull.
Counselwoman Cirillo?
No.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Nothing to pull, but maybe just comment on the three generators that will be placed in the firehouse. I don't have it here. Mr. Gross, the three places that they're on, two firehouses, and where was the third one?
I lost my place on my notes.
To be honest with you, I don't remember where the third one's going. I forgot. I apologize.
That's okay. I just had it, and I, oh, Fire Station Two, Fire Station Three, and right here in the municipal building.
I thought it was, but I didn't wanna say. I thought it was here.
Okay. This was on our agenda a few months back.
Yeah, this is a grant, this is out of a grant that we received some time ago.
Good job.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 114-18 was pulled by Counselman Kocoviac.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to pull this because it's a contract for $5,500. Doesn't sound like a lot in the context of a lot of the other contracts we're approving, but it is, from my perspective, I think every dollar that we spend, we should look to try to be as efficient as possible. This is one of these examples that because it was under the threshold requiring competitive proposals, that it was not bid out. It was a single, it was a single proposal that we got for $5,500. And I just wanted to, as people who come to the meetings know or watch the video, I vote against a lot of these, and I'm going to vote against this too. And I just wanna just use as an example another item that we have on the agenda tonight. It's Agenda Item F, 118-18. It's a resolution authorizing a contract to the firm PSNS for a contract for $47,500 for the generators, for the three generators to do design, do bid specs, and oversee and manage the project. And I just use this as an example, because when this first came to the council back in March, I raised questions about it, because at that time, it was a single proposed bidder who bid $97,800 for this project, and it just seemed like way out of line. I raised questions about it. It was, the administration wisely pulled it from the agenda. We went back and got the original bidder to rebid, and also got another bidder in. And the other bidder, lo and behold, put in a bid for less than 50% of what the original bid that the administration was proposing we accept. And I don't blame anybody. I'm just saying that this is an example, when you get two or more bids, even if you're not required to, under our state procurement laws, that you don't know what's gonna happen. In this case, we've saved close to $50,000 by putting it out again. And that's why I don't think we should have these contracts, these bids, even the purchase orders, without trying to get at least two proposals. And I know the argument is that it can waste time, particularly in small amounts of money, but this is important to do. And I really do think that we should, as a council, should say, "We want you to always get at least two proposals on any sort of money you wanna spend." So I just flagged that. I just pulled 114-18, 'cause I wanted to vote against it, because, like I said, it's only one, it was only one proposal.
Council President, it's not necessary, but the reason that we had the executive session put on for this evening was to discuss this matter, the reason why this was being done, this resolution was being done. So if you don't, if people don't need it, that's fine, but if you want it, it'll take the 30 seconds from my end, but it's up to you.
So Ken, are you suggesting that we go into executive discussion, discuss this West Essex Highlands or affordable housing, and then come back and vote on this particular resolution?
Yeah, I mean, the...
It's related?
If you don't listen to the executive session first, then there's really no point in having it at all. You don't need to. It's up to you.
I think what council is also saying is that there were specific reasons that this was occurred. If you need, if you need more than, other than his, that indication from him, then we could go into executive session. But if you don't need more than that, then you don't need to go into executive session.
Right. And I already disagree with my colleague, because, you know, having both of us been in mediation, we know that we are at opposite ends of the spectrum with West Essex Highlands. So I would want to have a survey done, a study done, a traffic study done to challenge theirs. So we can pull it, go into executive session, and then come back and continue the discussion.
Yeah, now, I would like to make as informed a decision as possible. So if, if there's a suggestion that maybe going into executive session that this could provide more information, I'm happy to consider it.
Okay.
And we've already approved the executive session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. And let's finish. Good.
So we're gonna move on to ordinances and then come back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, I know. Ordinances on second...
This is Clerk Week. She knows exactly what she's doing.
She's just giving a proclamation.
Yes. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2541-18. An ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain Township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing employee status as a Township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselwoman Garino?
Yes.
Counselman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments or questions on this resolution, on this ordinance, sorry? John, do you wanna give us just a summary?
Yeah, this is an ordinance that sets salaries for all Township employees. The only changes on here reflect, to reflect the changes authorized in the introduced budget, and a couple of corrections that needed to be administered. The corrections are relatively minor.
Any questions, colleagues?
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2541-18?
So moved.
Second.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselwoman Garino?
Yes.
Counselman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, 2542-18. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven Traffic, subsection 7-13. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce...
Second.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselwoman Garino?
Yes.
Counselman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
This particular ordinance will be heard on June 12, and not May 22, because of advertising.
Okay.
Who did the ABC?
And we did get correspondence from the engineer on that, I believe.
Do you wanna just read that, or I can do it, whichever?
I, I have it online.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I asked Mr. Lepore, our town engineer, about this ordinance. He was proposing this, and it has to do with changing, slightly changing some of the parking prohibitions on South Valley Road, including areas around Lawrence Avenue and Ridgway Avenue. And I couldn't figure out from the ordinance why we were doing it. But here's what he said. "The purpose of this ordinance is to improve site distance for those turning onto South Valley Road from Lawrence Avenue and Ridgway Avenue by creating a slightly larger area where parking is prohibited at each intersection of the westerly side of South Valley Road. This was a matter discussed by and recommended by the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board." Ta-da. So maybe you should read the rest of this.
No, go ahead. Please, Counsel.
"It also codifies another prohibition of the westerly side of the South Valley Road from just south of Walker Road to the orange line. This area for decades has been posted. No parking any time, but somehow was eliminated in the codification." So that makes good sense to me.
Good. Thank you.
Executive session?
Okay. Should we do the budget?
Do the budget first? Okay, that's fine.
All right.
All right.
The meeting will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselwoman Garino?
Yes.
Counselman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
This is the time fixed for the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution for 2018. The budget was introduced on first reading by the Township Council on April 10, 2018, was advertised as required on April 26, 2018, together with notice of hearing for this time. Copies were available to the public during the past week, and a supply is here for anyone desiring a copy tonight.
Okay. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Just like in public comment, each person desiring to be heard, name and address before speaking, recognizing one at a time. All questions will be addressed to the chair. Where necessary, they will be referred to individuals of the governing body and municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before a school or county. Matters are not proper subjects of this hearing at this time. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the municipal budget... Entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution of 2018. Any comments?
Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The hearing is opened.
Any comments on the budget? Colleagues, public? Observing no further applicants, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Koviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. I look forward to the budget presentation at our next meeting. Okay?
So, we'll do. Then we'll go to executive session, right?
We're going to make, yeah, make a motion to go into executive session?
We don't need one.
Motion to go into executive session?
We don't need a recess.
You don't need one? Okay.
We're going to recess, make a motion to recess.
Recession. I'm making a motion to recess.
Okay.
To go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Back from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
So, what was pending was Resolution 114-18, matter, township, let's say, resolution authorizing commencement of declaratory judgment, action consistent with transitional process, ta-da. West Essex Highlands, owner of 125 acre property located in northwest area of township, in order to challenge the township's affordable housing plan as related to West Essex Highlands' interest in developing the property. West Essex Highlands' challenge relates to the number of units they seek to build at the property, potential impact on the traffic is being contested, including the submission by West Essex Highlands of a traffic study. So, our resolution is to move forward with the traffic study. So, make a motion.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Koviac?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And I, is there any pending matters, new matters, council discussion?
None at this time.
None at this time? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned. Happy Mother's Day, enjoy your weekend. Thank you.